Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our December 6, 2017, regular board meeting. I'd like everybody to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America for which it stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In case of an emergency, the exits are clearly marked. Out here is an exit into a parking lot. If you follow the hallway down to another, you know, to an outside exit, you'll be able to, you know, leave the building safely. Any and all correspondence that can be posted are posted outside in the hallway on the table. And I'd like to welcome our Wilson students and their families for a Dash and Dot Robots presentation, which was granted by the Rockville Center Ed Foundation. So at this time, bring up.
Bonjour. Wrong language, sorry. Tonight happens to be a very special night for me because this will be my last Board of Education meeting, and I don't know if you know it, I've been to many, many, many over the past number of years. The thing that I take great pride in is our Rockville Center educational community. And I have to tell you that I have been blessed to know these children as well as other students who are graduates by this point of the Rockville Center Schools through our Stellar program. Now, the T in Stellar stands for technology, and today our topic will be, we'll be talking a little bit about robotics. I have to say thank you to Mrs. Mary Messina, who's not with us tonight. She's also a Stellar teacher. She's one of the people who applied for the grant with the Rockville Center Education Foundation. And I have to say that Ms. Lacy Lor has my undying support from here on in. We have a little video to share with you, and then Lacy will do, will speak a little bit, and the kids will give most of the presentation tonight. And I thank you.
Guys, ready for the video?
What is STEAM?
Science.
Tech.
Engineering.
Art.
Math.
Rocket Robots!
Dash is a robot.
This is Grandma.
This is another robot we use.
This is a fun fact about robots.
They make your life easier.
Robots make life safer.
Robots makes things faster than humans.
This is an art reading printer.
Another example of a robot.
It can do stuff humans can't do.
We connect all robots with Bluetooth.
In order to use the robot, you need to know how to code.
Daisy the Dinosaur is a program that we use to help us bond.
And it helps you learn how to code.
What does go do?
Um, it teaches you how to code.
Blockly uses words and go down.
Forward.
What happened if you went 50 centimeters?
It would go over the arrows.
So it would go too far?
Yeah.
Holly, why is debugging important?
Debugging is important so we can get one place to another. If you don't debug it, it might go to the left instead of going to the right, if you want to go to the right.
What are you doing?
There's debugging, and Dash is going to be, they're doing all the things, so you can just command on the iPad, and it doesn't say it follows the commands, it does what it says. And when it reaches the finish line, it stops. Plus, you would have the left one go forward and the right arrow go down. So you would do this. And then you have to put this really fast. Really fast. No, this is go. And now this, you have to turn left. You press on it and it helps. You can even put it up. 100 centimeters to 20, 20 centimeters.
Oh, my name is Mr. Dash.
Oh, my name is Mr. Dash.
Hi, guys, what are you doing?
We're making Dash go in a semicircle.
And how are you gonna do that?
With Blockly.
Using Blockly? That's the program that you're using?
Yes.
To do it? So you're gonna code in that?
Yes.
Okay, what do you have to do to make Dash go in a semicircle?
You have to go forward, then turn left, and go forward again, then turn left again. Today, what we're gonna do with Dash is we're gonna make him go forward, we're gonna make him go forward, go in a circle, dance, a silly dance, and he'll wait five seconds.
I'm gonna watch it.
So now, our Wilson students are gonna be sharing with us a little bit about what they've been doing with robotics in Stellar. So from grade five, we have Emma Furman, we have Zach Varley, and Lucas Sheehan. From grade four, we have Kate Gupta. We have Samaria Sharon and Carly Satovia. So to start us off, Lucas is gonna tell us a little about STEAM.
STEAM is important to learn about in school because it helps us when we get older in life. Like, when we use Dash and Dots, that was an example of technology because you need technology to make robots work. Also, STEAM is not boring because there's five different subjects: science, technology, engineering, art, and math. It is fun when we learn to be creative and solve problems. This is why STEAM is important to learn about in school. It will help us shape the future.
Next, we have Samaria and Emma, who are going to tell us why robots are so important.
Robots make our lives easier. Did you know the 3D printer made a whole house overnight? The 3D printer is automatic and does everything itself. Robots do things some humans can't do. Robotics and code make a big difference. More people should learn to code and engineer.
The Scribler S2 is another example of a robot that can be easily programmed using code on a computer or laptop, and it can be very helpful in many ways. One great example is if someone has a disability where drawing is something they can't do. They can easily use Scribler by placing a marker in its pen port and programming what should be drawn. The code uses tile, which is like assembling puzzle pieces. Each tile is a different code that you put together to create the commands for what the robot will need to do. The Scribler S2 is an easy-to-use, fun robot that most importantly helps teach us problem-solving skills. It helps us learn to try things that sometimes may fail, which is okay, but to then rethink and try some more. It is very important that kids, and especially girls, start early in technology. It helps them create an interest at an early age that they can take with them as they head to college. Just like me, they can be inspired to one day become an engineer. By the time that many girls hit middle school to high school, they seem to think that technology and engineering is for boys only and do not bother to apply themselves. Today, only about 13% of technology and engineering jobs are held by women, and only about 8% of all college freshmen even choose engineering as a career. Young students need experiences with technology if we are going to succeed in our current world, which is growing, dependent on technology. We depend on engineers to design things from where we live, what we eat, what we drive, and how we communicate. The earlier we start, the more likely we will consider it as a career. Either way, regardless of whether or not they go onto college or go on to become engineers, everyone needs to learn fun problem-solving skills and how they can be easily applied to all types of subjects or help solve future problems.
Now, Keith and Zach are gonna talk about Dash and Dot.
This is Dot. Dot cannot move, but Dot can talk and sing. This is Dash. Dash can complete many tasks, like launching a ping-pong ball or playing on a xylophone. Dash can move. Dash and Dot are two very different robots.
We use the iPads on this app called Blockly. It let you code what the Dash should do. We made courses out of sheets and paper, and also a big course on a sheet of paper. Then we added, then we coded it to go on the course. This, this is start. This is to make it dance. This is to make it go forward. And this is to finish. This, this is one of the courses we did with some of the commands that we could use.
Now Carly is going to tell us about debugging.
Debugging is when you make changes in the code to make the robot do what we want it to do. If you don't debug, the robot might go right instead of left. Right now, we're gonna give a demonstration on Dash.
Okay, so we would like to thank the, is he done dancing? We would like to thank the board for allowing us to present tonight, and we would like to give a big thank you to the Rockville Center Education Foundation for their ongoing support of our students and allowing us to do amazing things like this in the classroom. Thank you.
And a happy birthday to Carly Satovia, just saying.
So, Mrs. Patterson, before you leave, just wanna, as most of you probably heard already, Mrs. Patterson is in fact leaving us. She has made the decision to retire. We are very, very unhappy about that. She came to us a number of years ago after a, actually, it was a relatively long history of working in industry. She made the decision to move over to education in the 90s. She came to us first to the middle school, and then finally, we had the wonderful opportunity to remove her over to Wilson School in 2006, where she came as a Stellar teacher and has worked there ever since. What a lot of people don't know, because she did it very, very discreetly and very, but very, very impressively, she was the union president for a number of years and negotiated a number of different contracts. So I got to know her not just as a teacher in the school district, but also the person on the opposite side of the table. So we're still on opposite sides of the table, as a matter of fact. Look at that. Right. So, okay, all right, fine. Anyway, we are very, very sorry to see you go, but we have a little something for you tonight. All right, John. Mary.
Oh, it's a beautiful certificate to thank me for my recognition, in recognition of my retirement and valuable contribution to the students and staff as an elementary teacher at Wilson Elementary School. And I have to say thank you. This means so very much to me.
Ciao, guys.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, students from Wilson. Great job. We're moving on to items for discussion. Dr. Johnson, update on new district website?
I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Pelletieri, if you don't mind. Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Just to get a brief overview, we are working on a new district website. We have talked about that. This will not be a presentation of any kind. Just, I did throw up the new screen you're going to see. You know, with a new website, it's not like a new car where there's a new website smell or anything like that. There's no fresh paint or anything. So initially, it's not gonna look so different. We are gonna have different links up at the top. You see Celebrate RVC. This is more about the vision around communication and improving communication and constantly working to improve communication with our parents and students and school community. So the idea of Celebrate RVC is all those great things that we do, that Herald reporter Zach is here tonight, the stories that we write, the presentations such as this. We're gonna really concentrate on trying to get the word out around Rockville Center Schools and all the great things our kids and our students do, our teachers, to really make it a great place to work and to be a part of and to go to school in. So again, it's all about communication. We will try to make it more intuitive so that we can find things. When the kids talk about debugging, we're going to try to declutter our website. There's just so much information in there, and so many different places, it's hard to find some things. We have things in places two and three times. We're really gonna work on, again, I keep going back to that word, communication and improving that and making sure we can get to where we need to get to, make sure we're using it as a successful communication tool. We want it to be more inclusive. There'll be translation buttons so we can translate anything that's on there. Our new board meetings used to be on a product called Vimeo, and it'll now be on YouTube. Will there be closed captioning? You'll be able to get to that from our websites, or really being inclusive, our entire community. I'm also, as a part of that, gonna be emailing all the parents tomorrow, K to 12, just asking a very simple, one question, very simple, brief survey, and I hope everyone will respond to, just insofar as what is the way that you feel is the best way? What is your preference for our communications to you as a community member? Do you want us to tweet information? Do you want Facebook information? Do you want information in your school's newsletter? Do you want things pushed out through the app? Do you want things on the website? What's the best way to get information out to parents and information out to our community? And I can't promise everyone's preference will be met, but we will put that out on Google Forms and try to come up with ways in which we can. There'll be a little box in there if you want to put a little more information as well. Just again, ways we can work on getting information out about the district and what's going on here. So this is the first step. It's kind of at the forefront. We will go live with our new website in January when we come back from break, and we will walk through it then much more closely. But just a little background on our hopes and what it is that we're going to do and just the thought process behind why, why switching over to a new website. I don't know if there's any questions from the board or...
Well, are there other changes? Is Power Schools changing?
So Power Schools will still be the same piece, and we'll still be able to get through it. There will be, I promised Lauren I would not show too much on here because it's not really done, but you see these quick links here? This would be a nice, fast way to get to a lot of things that we want to get to, and you can click on this and go across and be able to get to athletics, be able to get to Power Schools, our school menu, those things that we know people want to get to. But we will still be using, for example, Power Schools.
And so the app will not change either to separate?
Initially, the app will not change. Our thought processes, again, to streamline as much as we can. And so the app is a different product now, and we'll look to bring it kind of in line with School Messenger, which is the company that we're working with now for the website, so that we are not going to many different places with many different vendors and logins and things like that. We're really trying to be conscious of that. Initially, app the same.
Okay. And when you ask parents, you know, how do you want to be notified? Right now, we get notifications in our apps, we get, we tweet, Lauren tweets, there's Facebook.
Facebook.
Are you looking to get rid of any of these?
I wanna know what's, if there's something overwhelmingly that people are using, and we need to recognize that every time we communicate something, we need to use that. So RoboCall is an example on there. Everyone knows Mr. Bartel's voice right now. We like to wake up to that in the winter, right? When there's a snowfall, some of us do. But is that the best way? Or is it a push through the app? Or is it put it on the website so that when you open it, something pops up? What is the best way to communicate with people these days? So that's what we're really trying to get to the heart of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is security in our buildings. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. You know, I'm just gonna own this one myself tonight, not gonna delegate it to somebody else. And the reason being is that usually I'm sitting at the table when we have discussions about security in our building. Certainly nothing new to us, and it's something that we have been working on for a number of years. But there are, in fact, two conversations usually that take place within the school district. I'd like to focus on one tonight, but I think we can't ignore the fact that we have both security, and I'm just gonna say for practical purposes, there is security and then there is safety. And if you begin to take a look at what the definitions of either or both of these are, you're gonna see that they overlap. They certainly intersect with one another. But when we have conversations, very often about security, what we are focusing on primarily are the operations that take place within our buildings, what our buildings look like, how they operate, who's in the building, how people enter the building, how they move through the building, how they exit the building. Safety, for the most part, is much more of an expanded conversation. It includes all of those things that we just mentioned with regard to security, but it also expands to include the relationships that exist in among, between our students in the school district. We need to focus very, very carefully on exactly how kids relate with one another. Bullying, therefore, becomes one of the issues with regard to safety in the buildings. Of course, it's not the general culture of the building, but it gets down to the individual relationships that exist within the building itself. We also take a look at, when we talk about safety, allergies and medication. We also take a look at drugs and alcohol. We take a look at bullying, as I mentioned to you just a few minutes ago, harassment. We take a look at all of the relationships that can exist, both within our building and within the community at large. It's a much larger discussion. It's one that includes not just members of our staff, but in fact, the entire community. In order for us actually, somewhat of a conclusory remark, but nevertheless, when you talk about safety, what we're really talking about is the ability of the community to protect itself. And therefore, what it really builds on is the interconnectivity that exists between and among the members of this community. Our willingness to reach out to children, to families, and to other members of the community and ask one another to look out for each other. And at the end of the day, the way in which we can almost guarantee safety is to know that there are others out there watching with the same eyes that I may have to protect our children, protect one another. We depend on that. You see signs around this building, as you see signs around in every one of our buildings, see something, say something. Underlying that is that relationship that has to exist within the community. And I think that's, that really is a hallmark of all that we do when we talk about safety. Much of our discussion over the past year, however, has been about security within our building. It actually began in the middle of last year, when in fact, we had the smart bond issue that we in fact could apply for. And what we did was, in fact, take one half of it. We went to the Board of Education and asked if we could put together a series of recommendations to the state that would in fact help us make our buildings somewhat more secure. So what we included in that initially was a new locking system within the building so that the swipe cards that we use are gonna be updated. They will be not only added, but we were going to improve on that system. We are also taking a look at, within that, a number of other things that we can, at the entrance to each of our buildings, have a camera. Not that we don't have cameras at the building entrances right now, but the cameras that we're talking about are the ones that see you when you walk up. In other words, you push a bell or you knock on the door, and in fact, there's a camera right there staring you in the face. I'm not sure I want to see everybody's face at the, at the level that we will be able to, but nevertheless, that's all part of that Smart Schools grant. We are also looking to upgrade the systems that we already have in place, take our camera systems and make them better, to improve on the technology that we already have so that the history of what it is that we're looking at can in fact be retained. We are also taking a look at the videos so that the storage capacity is improved. Much of what it is that we do is historical in nature, which means that it's just not knowing and being able to see something either before or as it is happening, being able to record it, and in fact, find out what in fact did happen. So that's a very, very important part of what security within our buildings is all about, and in fact, that's what this bond is all about. We have also been meeting during this school year. It began last year. Dr. Leahy, myself, and the Police Commissioner meet on a quarterly basis. We discuss security, some of which I can, some of which I cannot discuss. We discuss security, some of which I cannot discuss with the people in the room tonight, but nevertheless, the focus is really on how do we make our buildings more secure? What is the response time that the police have to get to every single one of our buildings in town, including covert school? We take a look and review all of the procedures that we have in place. More recently, our discussions have focused on ways in which we can share some of the video, in fact, at the time that there might be an emergency that the police have to respond to. So the Police Commissioner meets with us periodically to discuss a variety of different issues that occur within this community and that may intersect with the life in our schools. In addition to that, we have met with our architects. Bosie's has an expert that it has hired, in fact, to work on safety in the schools. We have met with him. We have a company that we work with as both a consultant and a provider for much of the security devices that we, in fact, it's called A+ Technology. They are a nationally recognized firm and consultant and we have met with them in addition. So there are a number of other things that we are looking at this year in ways in which we might, in fact, be able to better secure our buildings from the point of view of adding to the collection of things that we do with technology. Just to give you some examples of things that we are looking at, communication, you know, little things that you wouldn't ordinarily think about, but when physical education goes outdoors, does the phys ed teacher have a radio and could they be in touch with people inside? So the questions that are posed to us by the consultants that come in and meet with us are only going to help us improve on the procedures that we have in place or that we want to see in place in order to make our children safer during the school day. We've looked at other things such as the improved P.A. system. We're looking at visitor management systems. I know it's become a common practice, although we're not sure if it's value-added, but nevertheless, it is something that is used quite extensively in other schools, which essentially is a license reader. So I come in, I take out my license, I put it through a machine, it prints out a badge, the badge gets attached to my person in some way and then I'm identified as a visitor with a picture. So we are looking at technology along those lines as well. All of which helps us, I think, to some extent, secure our buildings. Interestingly enough, at the last couple of board meetings, that conversation is going on in the community at the same time that we've been having this conversation with professionals who work with us on enabling this to take place. We welcome the opportunity to meet with anybody who has an idea or a concern. I think, bottom line, when kids go into our building, they need to feel safe. They need to feel safe. For example, I just read an article earlier today that some of the training that takes place nationally with regard to active shooter training scares kids rather than, in fact, it doesn't make kids feel safe. It actually undermines their feeling of safety within the buildings. So there is that debate nationally going on right now as to exactly what should be taking place within schools, what kind of training should be taking place. So we are very, very much in touch with all of that. It is something that we consider to be very, very important for us within the school environment and will continue. But the important piece of it is that whether you are a student here at South Side High School, a student at the middle school or in any of our elementaries, when you drop your children off, you have to feel that they are safe within the confines of our buildings and we want your children, when they walk within those doors, to feel very safe. We know, and I can tell you whether it is because of bullying, because of any other harassment or because of events that may take place out, if kids don't feel safe, they're not going to learn. So it is a paramount problem for us. It is something that we must take care of and make sure that children, when they come into our buildings, feel safe. It cannot be a distraction for them during the school day. We recognize and understand that. And so consequently, during the entire school year, many times at principal's meetings, we will have discussions about either safety or security within our buildings. So this is one, I would say. I've just kind of outlined and touched on a few things within our system that, in fact, we are talking about and addressing at this time, but I think you need to understand that it is an ongoing discussion. It is not something that we are just going to think we can do something now and then forget it. It is something that will become part of our budget discussions as we proceed through the year. For example, one of the things that is under discussion in many school districts and some school districts have opted to put them in already are vestibules in elementary buildings or vestibules in buildings. So that people come in, they walk into an anteroom before they walk into the building. So they enter the building twice. Not everybody agrees that that is, that there is a real value added to that because once you're in the building, you're in the building. And the issue for many of our consultants is, in fact, how do you restrict access to the building? And it's that statement that is a critical one. Who comes into the building and when? For example, one of the questions that was posed to us was, do you allow people to come into your building who do not have an appointment? Must everyone who come into the building have an appointment and be on a list in advance and therefore no one comes into the building unless they have an appointment? I'm not sure we want to walk down that road, but nevertheless, these are the types of questions that are posed to us by people who come in here as professionals and want to know what it is that we do within our buildings. So at any rate, the whole point is we have this ongoing and continuing discussion about both safety and security within our buildings and within our community. And the underlying intent is to always make sure that when your children, when our children come into and enter our buildings, they are, in fact, they feel safe so that we in the classroom, we in the schools, can focus on what we consider to be our mission in life, which is to educate your children. So I'm not sure if there are any questions, but I, it is an item for discussion.
Anybody further from the board?
Dr. Johnson, can you talk a little bit about the types of drills that are done? And also, the drill that we do in May where we shut the schools down slightly early for the schools to go through, I've been questioned by parents as to why we do that at the end of the school year instead of the beginning of the school year for kids' training purposes and getting them acclimated and understanding what to do in a situation. I was asked that question, so I just wanted to pass it over.
We could do it at any time during the school year. That's, I mean, I could certainly bring that back to the principals and we can make that decision. There's no reason why we necessarily do it at the end of the school year. That could be done at the beginning of the school year.
I think that might be helpful to set the stage for the rest of the school year.
Well, that's one of many types of drills you could do. Is that really the best drill that we...
We routinely now do drills within the buildings that have to do with both safety, with fire. You know, the numbers of drills that we do in the building have expanded significantly over the years so that if I had our principals here, they would routinely go through with you all of the different times that they have a variety of different drills that they have going on within the schools to familiarize both the staff and their children with the procedures that they have in place. Except for that, we go through drills all year long, many of which take place, as you probably are well aware because you have kids in the school. We've already done many of them already. We can go back and take a look at that other drill where we close schools a little bit early and then move it up in the school year.
Anyone else? I'd like to open up the mic to anybody in the public who'd like to speak specifically about security in our buildings. Bring up any points or concerns.
Jeff Greenfield, Citizen Taxpayer, Uba Court. So I know you've already instituted some changes here with respect to security. For 45 years, I've been walking into this building by the boiler room, by the doors between the cafeteria and the boiler room. I wasn't able, I park over there. I wasn't able to walk in that way tonight. It's the first time in 45 years. On Sunday afternoons, I used to play basketball as a kid growing up in Mearfield Road. You've got cameras and security and everything like that. I walked in by those doors for 45 years. What are you doing to me? I want to be able to walk in by those doors again.
We're going to put the Jeff Greenfield plate on that door, Jeff, and we'll provide you with a special...
I aspire to better than that, Dr. J. All right. So I think you're headed in the right direction and I think the consumer confidence of the community and the parents dictate that we can never not do enough. And you have to, you have to go to great lengths here to make people feel good. So it's important to the community and that's what I hear.
Just along those lines, just so you know, there's been a lot of concern recently that's been written about overreach and doing more than, and because there, we really want to do it right and make sure that, look, we have a warm, inviting, comfortable environment in our elementary buildings. Just look around this room and I can tell you right now that the family at Watson School, even though we keep those doors locked during the school day, I believe, you tell me if I'm wrong, kids within that building feel very comfortable and very safe. And yet, at the same time, I'm not sure what, in addition to what we do right now, is going to add to that. And that's what we have to examine very carefully.
I agree with you. Don't ever take a TSA approach. TSA stands for Terrible Stupid Agency. Don't emulate to be like that, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Ann Wilson. So sorry. My apologies. I'm looking at three people over, oh my God. I'm looking, I'm saying to myself, what did I, oh. Watson and Wilson, thank you very much, okay. But it's true in both buildings. Right. You know it, you feel it when you walk into those buildings. I know what it feels like. We don't want to do anything to upset and to damage that relationship that you have with those children in that building or with the families. And yet, at the same time, we have to make sure that those buildings are safe for everybody, both you and for every child that walks in that building. Yes?
Elizabeth Arnott, 120 Berkshire Road. Is it true, I just heard this in passing, that the greenhouse children in the basement, is there only one entrance in and one out and only one window?
You have the greenhouse director right sitting right next to you, right there.
No, that is not...
Not true.
It's safe. My kids feel the same that their kids feel. There's a front entry which faces Sunrise Highway. If you know the office building, there's the Ty Pondos Studio in the corner. Do you know the building where it is? Doesn't say 189 above our front entranceway there. It says Sunrise Build, that's entry number one. Entry number two, close your ears, Dr. J. It's not the prettiest entryway. It involves an alleyway, which is the backside of some restaurants and businesses and so forth, and it's an alleyway and it's not the prettiest alleyway that was ever made, but that's entryway number two. And inside the greenhouse, we can, we have a fire drill. We could go up to the Sunrise Highway side, which would be disastrous because with fire drill, we don't want kids going, their drivers are crazy. But what we do is we go out the back way, through the alley and over to the train station. So there's two distinct paths. And, you know, we talk to kids about...
That's great.
We have the same fire drills and so forth, but everybody else has, it's safe.
That's great. Is there a criteria for security guards? I know that, that there's criteria for security guards in other districts and I'm just wondering, what physical capacity do they need to have in order to be in that kind of position?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I think I would hope that if I saw a security guard, my expectation, and books, you can't read a book by its cover, but my expectation would be that they would be fit to handle the situations we're trying to protect our children from. So I'm asking, are they all, is there any criteria for them to fulfill that position and/or to maintain their position? So if they've been with us for, say, 20 or 30 or 40 years, is there an age limit? Is there a physical demand that they need to maintain to chase maybe somebody or to...
Not that I'm aware of. Are you?
Not physical, no.
No.
Do you think there should be at all?
I'm not sure what you want them to do. We communicate with one another. That's what their requirement is.
So they're not supposed to stop anything or do anything if should something happen?
They do stand, they will stand in harm's way to a person and have.
But there is no criteria? That's what I'm asking.
None that we've, no.
Specific test, no, specific physical test, no. They go through annual training.
Are you talking like push-ups and sit-ups and...
No, I'm talking about just being able to fulfill that duty, that, different positions hold different duties. And I think that a security guard is, could be put in a very tough position to be able to have to, it could be a demanding job, could be, and you have to be ready for that.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, the emergency wall repair at the South Side Middle School, progress?
Yeah, I'm just going to turn this over to the gentleman to my left, Mr. Bartels.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Back at beginning of October, we had identified a back section of the wall at South Side Middle School, which was being compromised. It was kind of, the brick wall was separating from the main part of the building. We had our architects review it. We determined right away it needed an emergency repair. So what we did first was we set up a sidewalk bridge to protect anybody beneath from the wall falling down inadvertently until we had a chance to remove it. We then had a contractor remove the compromised section, which was on the north side of the wall in the back of the building facing the field. It was the section around the cafeteria. So we had to put in some partitions in the cafeteria to protect anybody inside from any of the work that was going on outside. So we removed a small section first so there was no danger of any bricks coming down. Since that time, we have declared it an emergency repair. We have removed the rest of that wall and we've had a contractor in place beginning the repairs on the wall. We had to do an abatement of the interior part of the wall, which was done over the Thanksgiving break. So that is all cleared up and the contractor has been back setting up the wall for the new brick. So we're still waiting the new brick to arrive, which should match the other brick around the building. And then once that's here, that will start going up immediately. They expect that work to be completed in two to three weeks, once they start putting that brick back up.
Could they possibly be delayed by the weather? Do they have the provision to tent the building as we learn what they do in construction?
Yeah. They don't believe they need to tent the building. They can work in the cold weather to put that brick up.
Does that affect the order?
No, it should not affect the order.
Okay. How long is the guarantee for it?
It's a long-term guarantee. And these are solid, a solid contract. We had a couple of proposals... We had a couple proposals for the repair. We did get one from a very solid contractor.
Any questions from the board? How are we affected inside the room? No, it's just that there's no, there are no windows now.
Yeah, there's just no windows in the cafeteria. That's it.
Well, there are windows, but we have them covered.
Yeah, they're blocked off. It was set up three or four feet from the window, so there'll be access. So when the brick goes up, workers can be kind of inside the building but behind that wall.
Right.
So there's no debris or damage or anything that will impact the cafeteria or any students or staff in the building.
And all our old windows are good, we're just going up?
Yes.
All right. Dr. Johnson, opportunity for superintendent?
I just want to wish everybody wonderful holidays. It's the, I guess, last opportunity we'll have to do so. I'd like to thank the board, by the way, for its holiday reception this afternoon. It was really very gratifying. Number of the people that I had an opportunity to talk with personally today, from Wilson and Watson and elsewhere in the school district, came over. Each year, the Board of Education has a reception for the staff. It really is a nice way of both thanking the staff and connecting the Board of Education to members of our wonderful staff here in the Rockville Center Schools. So again, in that spirit, I just wanted to thank the board for doing that, and at the same time, wish everyone a wonderful holiday season. So thank you very much, John.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Opportunity for board members. Mr. Mason?
Okay, thank you. First, echo Dr. Johnson's sentiments about everybody have a happy holiday season and a healthy and happy new year, as this is our last meeting. Look at the school calendar. There's a lot of exciting things happening in the next two, three weeks, whether it be concerts culminating in the high school concert on the 21st of December, and the elementary concerts, the middle school concerts, the athletic events that are taking place, the ladies cyclones, the boys' holiday basketball tournament taking place later this month. And finally, the, for myself, one of the most exciting and worthwhile things to see at these meetings is the kids who come and proudly show off what they have learned and what they enjoy doing. And it is really time for us to step back and take into account and to see the joy that they exhibit to us and how and what they have learned and how we are so fortunate to have them as the up-and-coming generations. So I thank our staff, I thank our parents, and most of all, I thank our kids for taking their time to show us what they have learned. Thank you.
Mrs. Deen?
Thank you. I will repeat the happy holidays for everybody. I also want to thank the kids. It is always wonderful. It's our favorite thing to have kids come and show us what they can do and impress us. And then I'd also, she's left already, but I really want to thank and congratulate Vieri Pedersen. We talk a lot about buildings here. We talked a lot about construction for years. But our schools are not our buildings. Our schools are the people that are in the schools, the people that touch our children every day, that challenge them, that make them into the amazing people that they become. She was a great teacher and a great person in this district. I sincerely thank her for all that she did.
Mrs. McPalti?
Thank you. I also would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday. I can't believe that we are here already. It has gone with, like a flash. I would also like to say thank you to the Wilson students. It's always so wonderful to watch. It's so great to see what they're doing. And Dash and Dot seem to be a hot holiday toy this year, so you're doing a great job in making our Christmas list easy, mindware, and all that kind of fun stuff. So thank you, because you're really igniting the minds of our young children, so we appreciate that. It's awesome. I also wanted to say that we had a great holiday reception today. That was my first one, and it was really nice. The turnout was so excellent to see, and it's great to really get that intimate conversations with teachers and really get to talk to them and just how wonderful they all are and excited about their jobs. So thank you all for what you do. I also would like to thank SEP for our inclusive week this week. It really was fantastic. I know my own children wore their Watch and Church spirit. They talked about internet safety, and it's really a wonderful thing that we all should be talking about and working with our children on. So thank you.
Mrs. Hackett?
Completely repetitive and boring, but I want to congratulate Vieri as well and thank her for her service. She's just a wonderful person. And also thank you to the Rockville Center Ed Foundation for partnering with the district and providing so many wonderful things. Wilson kids were great. They were wonderful to look at and see how excited they are about Dot and Dash. I know my son Tyler wrote to Santa for one this year. We're using it over at Hewitt as well, and I just, I really do appreciate the work the Rockville Center Ed Foundation does and how they work with us. And happy holidays. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, a very merry Christmas, and a happy and healthy new year. I'd like to acknowledge that the Board of Education is very grateful for the staff and the buildings and the great things they do with our children and how they help our children achieve the greatness that we want them to achieve. I'm also very grateful for the administration and my fellow board members for what we do for the district. I'm not, I don't want to, you know, pat myself on the back, but we spend a lot of time together and we make a lot of good things happen. I got a little point set up for everybody, just as a small token of my appreciation, and happy holidays to you. I'd like to, our next regular board meeting is in the auditorium. It is on January 10th, 2018. Already, we're starting that 18th. I'd like to ask anybody who is interested, please attend. I'd also like to, to save the date, the Booster Club is having their annual Booster Bash. It's a great organization. They raise a lot of money. That all goes back to, you know, high school students. It is January 27th, 2018, and on a side note, I am one of the honorees.
Let's see what John says.
I think I'd like to hold the visitors responsible after we, can I do that? People have a duty or?
Looking at something?
To, till after we, you know, accept all the items for action. What do you think? Okay. Opportunities for visitors. Anybody who wishes to come to the mic on any topic, please come up, give us your name and address.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Locato, 195 Hempstead Avenue. Mr. Pelletier, this question is to you, which I don't know if you're going to have an answer for. But at the current moment, when you use the Power Schools app, you cannot access NWA scores, state scores, report cards, progress reports. You can only access them on your desktop. And at some point in time, will we have that capacity to be able to access it from the app on our phones?
Right. We do not have the ability to get it from the app at this point. So that's something that we would look at going forward to try and do, but it is desktop or laptop.
Yes.
Right. Just not through the app right now.
Losing the convenience of being out and about on my phone and being able to physically, you know, not that it's.
Are we attempting to go there, or is that something we can't?
No, currently, we can't do that. That is something that we're looking to do. Yeah, I'm definitely not going to promise you that, but that's something that we'll look for, again, as we work with School Messenger and try and improve the app.
Okay, and I'm assuming as well that all of the glitches that we've been having with trying to open up the report cards, it doesn't really seem to be so much with the middle school and the high school. It really seems to be with the elementary school, that it's very difficult to open up anything, the scores and the report cards, that like you get kicked back and then you get a message that's an error, and then you go back into it. You can add all your information the exact same way you did the first time, and it kind of just seems like when it wants to work, it works. So, I mean, I got everything I needed. I mean, all those, you know, Watson was great. They were going to provide us with printed copies if need be. It just, it gets a little frustrating after a while, because you second-guess that I put everything incorrectly, my right username and my right password, because that could be enough to throw it off. But you're not given, like, what specifically is the error? It just says there's an error and to contact administration.
It's interesting, because the middle school and high school use the same product. It's called Web Edge, where we take, we capture the report cards or we put them in, and then we go into the portal and we can look at them. And it's interesting that, yes, I do get more concern from parents at the elementary level than I do, and that could be a part of us moving to that later. The middle school and high school, we're doing that earlier. They have a little more experience with it. We have trained our folks on it. It's something that we continue to look to improve. We're in constant contact with Web Edge, the organization as well. And then the kicked out and kicked back in, it's so frustrating. I understand that. I hate that that's happening. I actually made that a priority for our staff, because when we work with Web Edge, they don't have a solution for that kick out and then back in. Sometimes it's because you're on Internet Explorer 12, or you're on Internet Explorer 15, or Internet, now they have Edge.
Yeah, or you could be using Chrome.
Or if you're on Google Chrome. So we try to get through that litany of what it might be, and for some people, I think they get right in. But those are very lucky people.
Yeah.
And I don't, I'm not belittling the fact that it is, I recognize it is frustrating. It is something that frustrates us as well, and the staff hold their breath every time we post these report cards, because they get phone calls at the schools and technology gets phone calls as well. I really wanted to go, we cannot go back and just hand everyone paper again. Like, we need to fight through it. And so we're with you on that, and I, again, apologize that it's happening.
I raise it just because I, for the first time this year, I have somebody in the high school, somebody in the middle school, and somebody in elementary school. So I'm getting to experience all the components of it and.
So when you go in for high school and middle school, it works.
High school.
But the elementary one.
Yeah. Middle school is way better than elementary school. It's like a trial and error of trying.
So what I do is, with some folks, I'll ask them for their login and password, and we try to replicate those issues, and that helps us problem-solve.
Okay.
So maybe you can reach out to me if you don't mind.
I won't mind. I don't know it offhand.
Really piques my interest to know that you can get to those two, but not to the other one.
Yeah, that's what was surprising to me. I mean, obviously, yes, I have my one password and username to access for all of my children, and then they each have their own.
Student portfolio.
Student portfolios, so they have their own. But yeah, and all purpose sake, I have one for all three of my kids. And on the app on the phone, I can bring all three of them up with no problem and get their grades and everything. It just seems to come to the point in time when it's, well, I should say, report cards is really what it is for elementary school.
Yeah, and the report card, so there's a little piece there, because the report card is a separate entity from what the middle school and the high school are doing.
Yeah, that might be.
If you don't mind working with us.
I will. I'll send you that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Greenfield, still, citizen taxpayer, life member of PTA, UBA court. So it sounded to me like the report card issue is tied into the levels of security. The best is the high school security, and I hope it's not tied in in any way. That was a joke. On the security front, one further question. I know some of our security people are retired law enforcement. Are they carrying guns when they're on duty here?
No.
Good. Next, I wanted an update. I thought it'd be on the agenda tonight on the rebid on the bus contract.
It will be. It's going to be acted on tonight.
But it's not on the agenda. At the back, that's it?
There's an addendum, or will be an addendum that will be, that will be added. We were uncertain as to whether or not the board was in fact going to act on it tonight, but it did have an opportunity, and in fact, it will.
So we're going to hear the results as.
At this point, why don't you, you know, why don't we explain what happens and what we are acting on?
Yeah, all right, fine. All right. We, as you know, during the time that there was a strike, we had a problem with transportation. We had opened up the doors, opened up opportunities for other companies to come in when Baumann was in fact struck by its drivers. What essentially happened was that another company came in and provided transportation during that period of time. We, however, then, at a subsequent board meeting, terminated the contract with Baumann and in fact, put out on the street a request for proposal. The opening date was November 28th at 4:00 p.m. We had two respondents, one of which was Baumann, the other was Guardian. And at the time, it's incumbent on Mr. Bartels and my responsibility to go back, take a look at those proposals that came to us, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the board. There are some very, very clear specifications that need to be met, and only one of the two companies, in fact, met those specifications, and consequently, we can only award it to one company, which we intend to do tonight. Required a lot of work on Mr. Bartel's side, and I thank him very much for the time and effort that he has put in on reviewing. I know, he and I both spent lots of time. The proposals actually, I mean, just to give you an idea of what they look like, from one of the companies, it was literally four inches thick, and from the other company, it was about two inches thick. So there's a lot for us to read, to review, to go over, so that there are an incredible number of submissions that are required to accompany the set of numbers that simply we usually either accept or reject. When it is a proposal, there are a whole variety of other things that have got to be presented to the Board of Education and to us for our review. So it took a good deal more time than we thought, but as it turned out, and we had to spend a lot of time reviewing this with our attorneys, only one of the two actually submitted a proposal that we could consider tonight. So we are recommending that we return to Baumann Bus, and that will be my recommendation tonight, and on the basis of everything that we have found out, that the proposed proposal that was submitted to us by Baumann did meet all of our terms and conditions, and in fact, we are recommending that it be awarded to Baumann tonight.
So basically, the school district, you know, on advice from our counsel also, the school, we only had the option to review one proposal, one completed proposal, and that's where our, the recommendation is coming from.
So let me have to say this. You're saying that Guardian bid was incomplete and ruled incomplete?
Yes.
And you only had one modified bid? All right. Dollar-wise, how does that compare to our prior contract?
Exactly the same.
What a coincidence, this bidding business, buses. What a coincidence. And I, in researching everything, I got a phone call, I don't know the reliability of it, but I'd like the superintendent, or Mr. Bartels, to look into it. During the period of labor, strife, or unrest, turmoil, I got a phone call telling me that Baumann may have been in default on their bond with respect to the Hicksville School District. They may have pulled the bond. You did an action of calling the contract, terminating the contract, but I heard that. So I'm just wondering their ability to post the necessary bond moving forward. Usually, when you have a bond pulled, it's a pretty radical issue, and it affects future bonding, whether it's in the construction arena or the buses or things like that. So I'm in possession of that information. I get a lot of calls on a lot of subjects, and I'd like you to check that out, because I think that's germane.
Jeff, with all, I mean, look, I don't want to make it seem like the Board of Education didn't do its homework.
Not saying that either.
No, no, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that our attorneys reviewed all of that. So I suspect that if that was known to our attorneys who represent.
So we have the necessary bond?
Yes. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yeah, so I mean, put your mind at rest.
Okay, no, I just, I didn't know whether, after you award it, then they post the bond? I didn't know the process.
No, no.
They provide bond with the bid.
With the bid. That's all part of the bidding process.
Okay, you require with the bid. Okay, I didn't see the specs. Okay. Was there any credit or credence given to the fact that the other vendor bailed out the district during a tough time? the district during a tough time?
Yes.
So what is the nature of their incomplete bid response? How material, Jermaine, was that? What significance? Was there no way around that with respect to that? I, I think of these people, it's not their first bid they've ever submitted.
I, I understand that, and we were very clear when we put out the proposal in what it was that we expected the bidders to complete, and he and I were both completely shocked that, that pieces of it were missing.
Okay. I leave it to the professionals on that front. I'm shocked also, and I'm shocked from another standpoint is I'm hearing from people in the community, only items of pleasure for their children's safety and reliability to serve the community from this new vendor, and for the first time in years, we have a new player. So when is this contract going to start?
Would be the 18th, December 18th.
So you're going to start it Monday, the 18th, and then school ends Friday that same week?
Yes.
You shouldn't hold it to the first of the year? Would that create less turmoil?
Create other issues.
Other issues? This is a year of issues. So you just had brick and mortar, issues.
Well, those were the terms on the RFP.
Oh, that was the effective date in the RFP?
That was the effective date of the RFP. So that's what, that's how that...
It was based on a 30-day extension.
Okay. Moving on to another subject. I'm still in a state of shock over the last, but I'm sure it's not the last we're going to hear about this.
My, Jeffrey, I am, I'm sure, it, look, it's, the word, look, it was a surprise that they went out on strike. We never anticipated that that was going to happen. It was a surprise that somebody came forward and helped us out. We've been very, we've had a very good working relationship with the company that came in and helped us out. Quite frankly, we thought that that relationship would continue, and in all honesty, I think everybody was surprised that the proposal did not come in as, as completed, come in.
So it's going to be effective the 18th? And how long a term is it for?
It'll go through the end of this year, and then it has to be renewed again.
Oh, so there'll be another opportunity for bidding for them to submit the same price as previously?
That all depends on us and them.
What do you mean?
It's always renewable, as you know.
Right. You roll it over.
We can.
Or you could bid.
Correct. Right.
Okay.
Or they can require that we bid. They can, they can back out of it as well.
Okay.
They have that option.
Bilateral.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to another, one of my favorite subjects here that I, I know the board has been very preoccupied and very busy. So have the board have an opportunity to consider the Jeff Greenfield proposal that we expand the school board from the current five member to seven members, like many of our surrounding neighboring communities?
We, we as a board have yet to speak about it.
Okay.
It is on our radar, and hopefully in January, we'll have a reaction to give you from the board, to you, to your, to your, the Jeff Greenfield movement, or however you want to place it.
I, I, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I just want to have enough time to mount my petition campaign in the event that you decide not to voluntarily engage in that, to get it on the ballot, and at that time, maybe you could give me an indication from the attorneys of how many signatures and how many days' notice you need in advance. Thank you very much. Happy holidays to the school board, the administration, and all the PTA moms in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Greenfield.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening. My name is Irene Pozio. I'm from Guardian Bus Company. I, I'm very shocked that the bid was incomplete. My question is, there were two binders. Were both binders reviewed?
Yes, in their entirety.
In their, and we were missing items?
Yes.
May we ask, will there be an opportunity to submit anything that's missing because it may have just been an oversight?
It's, it's our understanding was that if, that if we, if we had the opportunity to go back to you, there's a deadline. The deadline was 4 o'clock on the 28th. We're not allowed by law to return to you and say, you have an incomplete, would you please give us back additional information? We're not allowed to do that. We, we can only review what in fact is submitted to us by that deadline. If in fact, you had come in beforehand and talked to us about it, I mean, we could have had discussions about what was, what should or should not have been included in that bid, but after that deadline, we can't have a discussion with you. We can only review what you've submitted.
Okay. I'm very disappointed, and we are here to serve the community and continue to do so until a contract is offered.
Look, just, just from my perspective, and I'm, Jeffrey said it, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I've got nothing but accolades from the people in this community for the service that you guys have provided during the time that you came on until right up, right earlier tonight. So it is, has nothing to do with the fact that we appreciate the work that you have done, and hopefully will continue to appreciate the work that you will do. But we have to live with the law that is currently put together, and we have to live with the guidance that we get from our attorneys on this, and you're welcome to come in and take a look at, I mean, after the board takes action tonight, every, it's all public information. You're welcome to come in and take a look at what it was, or have a discussion with Mr. Bartels, or with me about what it was that was missing. So in the future, by the way, so you know that in the event that you do bid on anything else, that information is not, is not missing.
I, I appreciate that opportunity, and maybe we can, we will definitely take you up on that, or maybe we could even have a conversation shortly thereafter this meeting.
Right. But don't walk away from that microphone without understanding how much we appreciate what you guys have done. So I mean, look, everybody was surprised, including you, including us.
I'm very surprised. We worked diligently on that proposal to the best of our ability, and if there's something that was missing, it is truly nothing but an oversight, and there is nothing that we didn't want to do and not have complete.
I think we understand that, but we don't have a choice.
I, I understand, and I apologize that we didn't have it complete, and I look, I would like to see what happened to that.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that with one quick? I'm still in a state of shock that people that do this for a living, bidding, and I'm happy I don't have to do that for my living, that they, give us an example like how it was incomplete and what they left out. If it's, it's public information and public...
Not yet.
It's not public information yet, Jeff, you know.
Board has got to act first.
It will be after the action, so.
Okay. Okay.
Hang around.
Sure.
Would anybody else like to?
No school president ever asked me to hang around.
I didn't ask you. Jeff, you're always, we always welcome you.
Hello. I'm Kathy Baxley, Hawk Lane, Rockville Center. I'm speaking as parent, not as the PTA president. This past weekend, I had the experience of attending the All-State Music Concerts in Rochester, New York. Seven Southside High School students were selected. They participated in the band, the chorus, and the orchestra, or the orchestra. It's an experience they will never forget, and neither will we as parents. So I'm here to say as a parent, thank you. The support and encouragement from the administration, from the board, from Dr. Zohar, and especially the music teachers of music education, of participation, is outstanding in our schools. The elementary school teachers, the middle school teachers, the high school teachers prepare our students for school concerts, all district concerts, all county concerts, all state, and even further, and it's unparalleled. Our students are enriched, they're talented, they're thriving musically, and I just want you all to know how very much it is appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Baxley.
Now, where did she get the voice?
From me.
Listen, can I, can I just comment on that, Kathy? You know, just so you know, I, I think that, that members of the board and I, we, we could have said something tonight, but didn't, and it is because we take an entire evening to honor students who participated in both All-State. So just so you know...
We will recognize them.
We will.
I'm not asking for that at all.
No, no.
I was just to thank you and the teachers for everything that they do.
But understand that, yes, we, we understand what, what you do as a parent and what goes into the preparation.
Oh, for that, no, I know.
It really is a partnership between families and us, you know that.
But in some school districts, music education is not as supported. So thank you for that, for our kids. That's all. And I was at an event at the Sandal Senior Center today, and the intergenerational conferences on Tuesday. The senior citizens cannot wait for these kids to come. They are so excited. The chamber singers, I think, sing, the, the entire club, that is a very desirable club to be a part of, they're all going to be there on Tuesday, and the seniors can't wait. So it's just wonderful.
It is good.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baxley. Have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to approve receipt of the financial reports as listed on the agenda.
So moved.
So moved. A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, here comes a tricky one. Have a motion to accept items A through H and...
You have the addendum to the P A R, and you have the addendum.
And then addendum to the P A R, and an addendum.
So moved.
Second?
Second, second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one question. Robert, we have an approval for Sunday use here.
Yes.
And on it, it, it has three dates or three other dates? Do we normally do ors? Do we usually, what are we waiting for to assign the dates?
I'm not sure, but it, I'm sure it has to do with their scheduling, but from my understanding, we don't have a problem with either set of dates at this point.
Okay. So, but that means no one else can, so we're like blocking all six dates off?
Oh, no, not as soon.
No, one.
If somebody else were to apply, then what happens is we have to go back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they'll do the third or the 10th?
Right now, they're open, both dates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we still, with use of facility, we still have, they still pay the security guard, we still watch our neighbors' driveways, we still won't let them proceed with their, if something's wrong.
So this is the high school?
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the answer, but the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, we will charge them for the year.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion, we're, I, all in favor, motion to return it to executive session to discuss specific personnel, contractual, and litigation matters.
Are you coming back to the public session?
No, wait.
This was an addendum.
I thought you were going to say...
You, you're welcome to read this.
This is an addendum.
This is the addendum.
This is the addendum.
Did you take action on the addendum?
We did.
We did.
We did.
It wasn't out there.
Yes.
It was just, it was, it was written just five minutes before we came over.
Okay, so now that you took action, you've disclosed the issues you like?
Do we want to?
Why don't you come on up? You know what, I, I just soon, in general, I'll just tell you in general terms.
Okay.
All right? When, when we put together a proposal like that, when we have, we, we assign numbers of hours to buses, all right, there's a five-hour bus, a six-hour bus, a three-hour bus, two-hour bus, every one of them. Now, we don't always say that we need a four-hour bus, we don't, we may not need a five-hour bus, but if somebody, even if we have a zero next to it, you have to put a price. We're very clear in, in saying that, or I think we are, and therefore, every one of those lines have got to be responded to. So in the event that, that, that someone were to respond, or not respond, to any one of those lines, it is considered incomplete, and therefore, we cannot accept it. We have to have a price for every bus, and for every hour, and for every, for every assigned, for every possible assignment, even though it may at this time be zero.
And that's, that, one of the reasons for doing that is that we may not have a five-hour route that we need now, but next year it may come up, so we need to, that's to protect the district from, they know what they'll have to pay for that five-hour route.
So you want to lock in the price?
Lock in the price, as opposed to asking for when we have no control over what the price will be.
So that, I further understand this. I know in public bidding, they have bidders conference, so that the bidders fully understand what they have to bid on, and this is the first time I can remember in history where we've had more than one bidder on the regular transportation contract. We've had multiple bidders on the small buses, the special ed buses, outside of the community busing. But this is the first time in my, in the years of coming here that we've had this. Did we have a bidders conference to properly explain to everybody what the expectation was with respect to the condition of the document?
No, we didn't have a bidders conference. We did open it up to give the bidders a chance to ask questions, and those questions had to be in by a certain date, and then we provided a response on the questions to all, all people who were, who had asked for a copy of the RFP.
Just to let you know, we had, we had, we actually had, six packages were picked up.
Oh, six were picked up?
Yes.
And only two returned?
Two were returned.
And can we hear the names of the other companies that picked up the packages, and their reasons for not returning them?
We have no idea.
Okay, they don't tell you that they didn't say they don't know, could not do?
No.
So did that's the first time that you folks in Guardian are hearing this?
All in favor?
Oh, motion.
Motion.
Is there, there is no way of, because our prices, you know, again, because that was there for the opening, our prices, to provide, because that was not clear to us in the bid, if there's a way that we can amend that, because we are, we can lock those prices in, we can do that, is there a way to amend that, to amend that?
According to our attorney, once that bid is submitted at 4:00 PM of that day, that's the last time that document can be amended. That's the, we have to take that at face value. That's the only thing we can accept. We can't accept an amendment to that after that date. If you had, if it had come in the week before, the way I understand it, they could have said, oh, they could have said, oh, you know, you need to do this, this, and this, but that's the last possible...
We couldn't have done that in this situation because the bids are sealed.
Okay, so the bid would have been, okay, so that's, I'm wrong on that, but...
Did you talk to any drivers? Because I personally just spoke with...
We don't, we don't, the drivers don't...
...drivers that had to go to...
The drivers don't work for us, the companies...
Right, they worked for Baumann, and then they went, because they, like, wasn't, because they were no longer workers for Baumann, they went to work for Guardian. So they are so thrilled working for Guardian, and they are...
We're, we're bound, we're bound by law on this.
Very upset, oh, that's bound.
I know, you know, we have to, we have to abide by what the law tells us we have to do.
Can I, further question on this?
Come to the mic, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. So, did I understand this also? Or is it true about the, the bidding process, especially the bus bidding process? So you're acting upon advice of counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Is that memo of advice of counsel subject to foil?
No.
No. It's attorney-client privilege?
It's attorney-client privilege?
Yes.
Okay, just so I understand. Then on, on the items that they did submit, and the items that they did put prices on, were those prices better than the Baumann prices?
I don't know if we go there because we can't even, but we can't, the proposal that was submitted is, we can't accept it.
Your attorney told you that it deemed incomplete, I understand that, I'm accepting that.
You know, to do the comparison doesn't matter.
Not happily.
That, that proposal is null and void to the District of Rockville Center, so we had one completed proposal that we could deal with, and that's what we dealt with. There was no way around it, this is, that's the way it was.
Well, under the circumstances, I urge you to definitely go out to bid again next spring at your earliest opportunity to bid at the conclusion of the year for next year, and hope that we get some competition in there, and that you have a bidders' conference so that everyone understands what the expectation is, so, because we only gain by that encouraging competition.
Thank you. All right.
Is there a way that this bid can be nullified and a new proposal be sent out, and then continue with the 30-day extension of a contract, of an emergency contract? Because it is strictly, I understand that this is a technicality, it is not based on the performance that we've been doing. I am urging you, and for the community, we want to serve this community, and I believe we have been serving it well, and we're on to continue. So I am asking if this bid can be null, it's a proposal, you do not need to award it, you can ask for another 30-day emergency contract, we can resubmit a proposal, and we will make darn sure that there is nothing missing this time. Why can't we consider that?
That was a consideration on the table, and our attorneys advised against it at this point.
That's unfortunate because-
It doesn't mean there won't be another opportunity down the road, as Mr. Greenfield just pointed out, there is an opportunity at the end of this year, in fact, to reexamine our position and open it again, but at this point, I think the board is acting on advice of counsel, on a review of everything that was submitted, and we'd be very happy to sit down with you at this point and review with you what your proposal looks like.
I would like that opportunity.
Sure, we'd be very happy to have you come in and we can go over it with you, and go over every little piece of it with you.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
What's a motion? A motion to?
To adjourn. I did everything, I said it all.
A motion to return to executive session.
A motion to return to executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, have a great holiday season, see you in 2018.
Thank you.